We should be able to kind of get through the beginning stuff anyway. So, well, we called meeting to order. I guess we can do a flag.
No.
Can we get a flag in here?
Not yet.
It's not critical. You want to take Roland? Are you recording?
Yeah. So trustee LaRue and trustee Iverson will be a little bit late, so they're excused until they arrive. Trustee Winslow.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Present.
Clerk Critteri is here and supervisor Durant.
Here.
So staff present as manager Kengas, superintendent public works, Lenny Bodinas, fire chief Dan Shanahan is here, and staff planner Eric Powers is here.
Excellent. Okay. We don't have any problem?
No emails.
Zoom three off. No emails. I did tell Andrew that direct people in here would be where we were. I just need approval of the agenda then.
I saw move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
On a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Posed? Okay. The purpose of this meeting is strategic planning for 2022 to 26. Oh, the record today is Monday, January 24th, 2022, and we called the meeting to order at 2:00.
2:02.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This is a special meeting rather than just a workshop. If somebody wants to make a motion, you can't do that, but it's in the workshop frame of discussing strategic plan. We're also going to touch a little bit on the CIP items. Randy printed a packet. Looks like everybody's kind of got it. And we're going to talk about a memo that jumped together this morning talking about our ARPA funds, which kind of ties into the whole thing, CIP and strategic plan. So if you have your strategic plan in front of you, I know you probably haven't looked at it in a while, although I knew this meeting was coming up. You basically just have to change the dates to 2022 and 2023 to 26, cover up the 27. Is there anything you want to talk about, don't like? I'm okay with it the way it is.
I did look at it. I did look at it, Lynn, and I thought it was pretty well done. It caught all the flavor, I guess, of what we talked about in that session we had with Susan.
I have one objection. An extra letter in my first name.
Oh, well, we can fix it.
As long as there's not an extra letter in my name. Mine's okay. Yours is not, okay.
So basically what we do is we look at it. If we don't agree with it, we would change it, and if we do agree with it, we just approve it as presented, and then that's our strategic plan, correct?
Yep. And then we can kind of do what we want. If you remember, Dennis put it up on the wall behind us. I don't know if we want to go to that extreme because we don't have really specific things. Those were easier to kind of keep track of. This is more goal oriented. Transportation, we know, is going to be covered by some of the planning.
I just think we should have it on the wall somewhere, like this priority page with priority goals in the boardroom somewhere so we don't forget anything.
Okay. Now, we have to get the windows behind us so it'll be harder than the TV.
Well, we could put it on the wall somewhere. We've got wall space on the sides so we don't forget about it going looking down the road.
Well, and then maybe we take five minutes and look at it at each meeting and kind of see where we are, where we want to go, if we want to take something off or...
Well, yeah, because every so often, I guess, maybe the... Remember what we used to do is like the second meeting of the month?
Yeah.
We'd look at it, and if there was anything that needed to be adjusted or taken off, that's the time we'd do it.
Okay. Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Okay. Then, how was that? Is that the party goes you're looking at?
Yeah.
Mine type a little different place than yours.
Page 15 of 26, correct?
Yep.
Then the only thing I have on there, made it.
Your packet's over there, Dan.
All right.
Pick a spot.
Next to Dan over there.
Double D's. Well, now we can get started.
Just talking about the strategic plan.
I'll call the meeting to order.
And I, Randy suggested that we do put it up, ever I said how Dennis had it behind us in the old boardroom, and we would refer to it. So Randy was suggesting we do go ahead with that, do the same thing.
And we got to, I think our big... Does our big printer work, John? Is our big... Or is that out right now?
We should be able to do something with it. It's just a matter of which computer has to be connected to it because only half of that device runs out. Eleven, I guess, it doesn't matter. Because there's not a driver for the other half of the device, the way it was 11.
Well...
Sooner or later, something should be there on the wall.
Yep.
I figured out a way how to blow up a thing for Dan so I can make a bigger system.
So basically, page 15 of 26, we'd probably be the ones that we put that on the wall, basically, with our short term and longer term goals, right, Lynn? Something of that nature?
Yeah. Short term has, I don't know of mine, I think mine's...
I think we have four, like, kind of four points there.
Yours dated November 20 of '21.
Yes.
In the front.
Yeah.
So it does say schedule partner meetings 15 minutes monthly. We don't really do that.
We were going to do that, though, remember?
Well, we're scheduling, you know, we've got, on the next agenda, we've got the road commission, we're going to meet with them.
Yeah.
So we're not going to do it necessarily monthly. It's going to kind of be by their schedule.
I would say quarterly.
But, okay, so, but we managed to get the trail people in a lot, okay? So I think there's more than just the trail people out there, and maybe they should be quarterly or only once, too. I mean, you know, people in our community, the seniors are interested in the senior center. I'm interested in what's going on with something. You're interested in something else. Dan's interested in something else. We're not all interested in the trail people every other month presenting, so why does that happen?
I don't know that they do every other month.
Heritage trail, is that what you're...
It hasn't happened that much lately.
Because we have representation on that board.
But we do, but, so, so is that the... That's the only way? That's why we have them come so often?
Mm-hmm. We want to know where our taxpayer dollars are going, what they're doing with it.
Okay. Okay, Lynn, I agree.
That's different.
But they're not the only ones that are getting taxpayer dollars. So are senior services, so is the VA guy. So, you know, if you look at our tax bill, that's what I was thinking we should do. We should have those people come and talk. 15 minutes, however long we give the trail people. Why don't... Is that not a possibility? Is no one else interested? Dan?
I agree with you. I mean, we should...
That's where my money's going.
To other people, to other...
Well, we can invite Craig...
Whether they come or not.
Probably Craig Salo, and he's the VA, or the VA guy, and then...
Well, we can invite the lady from senior center.
Yeah.
What's her name?
I don't know, but...
It's not me. Right. You know, the library comes because the library board people come, but, you know, the library lady likes to come.
Advisory board.
Right.
Well, but actually, you're right. Whoever's probably, whoever we're paying taxes to probably should probably, if we can get them to come for a short presentation.
And that was really on my... When I ran for the board, I wanted to set an event up in this room with each of those people here, so Paulette or whoever could come and talk to them. Or Linda Winslow could come and say, "Seniors, tell me what you're doing for me. I'm giving you $100 out of my taxes every year. I'm not getting $100 worth. I am not." Ernie might be.
What? I don't give money away very easy.
No.
No, but there are lots of opportunities.
But that does make sense, though. I wouldn't have a problem with it, so...
Yeah. Then there would be a little bit of sharing from other places. Who else do we pay?
If you remember, that was one of the discussions we had, too. Must have been two years ago now, probably a year and a half ago, about bringing school system in and everything.
Oh, well, there's another one, yeah, the school system. Let's bring our friends in from there. And the ISD, I'd sure like to know what the money is going for that I pay there. Wouldn't you?
Well, like I said, the two that we're dealing with now, the MTN and library, we have representation on those. That's different. I mean, that's why they report.
Not MTN, the heritage.
Ah, you're right.
Yeah. And we used to run the senior services board, too, when there was a senior services board. I don't know what they're doing now.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Carol Humphrey was on that board for lots of years.
So I'll look at the tax bill.
Yeah. I mean, that should be our pattern because that's really what most people are interested in, right?
And we know we're going to decide on the road commission or, you know, pick a date.
Yeah, that's what I was doing, yeah.
And you know, the nice park and rec people, they get half a mileage, and Dan comes occasionally and texts, and they get money out of our taxes, too. People want to know. They'll be excited about the fire truck. Some will be happy.
Okay.
We can work on that. We can work on that.
If you want, I'll help you. Just tell me what you want me to do.
We can just say schedule partner meetings.
I actually know those people, most of them.
I don't know if they'll be monthly or not.
It's going to take up a lot of time.
Well, you have 12 months.
It'll take up a lot of time, and you won't be able to go to Florida anymore, so...
I am going. But I don't think I'm going to miss March's meeting, so I'll change anything.
Well, and the second one on there says to deploy trustees to present at partner agencies. I don't know that we... Well, we don't do it now. If we want to do that in the future...
And are they interested in having us come?
I don't know.
Well, that's the thing.
Trustees aren't spokespeople.
We almost, we shouldn't impose ourselves on other people.
Right.
If they want us to come and present, then it's either the officers or the manager that usually goes. It's not a trustee. I mean, if we wanted to send someone just to a meeting to see what's going on, I guess that's different, but...
Yeah, but it still keeps coming from the board.
So maybe present needs to be taken out of there. And maybe it's not deploy.
Yeah.
Encourage trustees to attend partner agency meetings or something.
Unless she's looking at trustees meeting the board, you know, not necessarily board trustees. She might just be looking at...
Oh, right. I think she probably meant to have anybody, right?
Yeah.
Well, maybe you want to change that, then, because somebody else is going to get you.
We're just looking at the priority goals.
Sorry about that.
Page 15, page 15.
Do we have four presented?
Actually, deploy trustees, present at partner meetings. I wouldn't even have a problem if you took that right out.
Yeah, I kind of think so. If we decide at some point we want to do that or recommend that these agencies listen to us.
Or if we're invited.
Yeah.
That would be a nice opportunity.
So at least if we start, you know, maybe if we have these connections with all of these agencies, probably 12 of them, I'm guessing, if we come up to that many, maybe they will invite us at some point. So if we just schedule partner meetings...
I'd take the 15 minutes monthly out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just leave it at that so that we know that that's what we want to do. Should we back up then a little bit under short term operational? We've kind of decided we still want to sell Schumwood, right? Before we put it on here and say, "Oh, when did we decide to do that?"
It seemed like in the end, well, we talked about it during prior sessions.
Yeah, it's been a while, so I just want to make sure we don't put this on the wall and then say, "When did we do that?"
So someone's going to say, "You're selling the park?"
No, it's the, it's not the park property.
So maybe in parentheses, that needs to be identified, why are that property out?
We could put excess acreage, maybe.
You need to look at what property we have that's available, that we think is available for sale, and then other than identifying.
I take this Schumwood out and sell excess property.
Right.
For acreage.
Okay. Any cap access? We've talked about that for the hall. Is that your own stock commitment?
I think, yeah. You're voting here, I think, and you have it open to the public. I think you have to do something.
Yeah.
We are ADA compliant, so it's a matter of having additional features that make it easier for wheelchair bound people specifically or people with walkers to have the door opened automatically for them. Brenda was just telling me today of some technology she experienced in Indiana with the bad moon ice river thing. That's, you don't even have to push a button. It's motion sensor. So I'm inclined to talk to 906 technologies to see what they know about this technology and what do we need to install to have sensors far enough away from the door that the door can open when it senses you without impacting your progress or ability. I don't want to put pedestals on the edge of the sidewalk or make it knock over by snowplow. Same thing with a push button. So we have to make sure we're designing that properly from a sustainability perspective. Everything we do should be sustainable, right?
And I think...
I don't want to have to keep paying to have it repaired every year.
And I think we only need, because this, we only need it on the one entrance over there. It doesn't need to be down here because they can actually come in that way if they have to, if they come down here.
So that might be a situation where you have a push button to get into the foyer, and then motion sensors on the walls when you break the, I don't know if it's infrared or what, when you break that plane, it senses you and opens the door for you. Once you're in, then, do you have to have it, people going back out? So we may need somebody to give us some advice on this.
So how would it put... How would if we put consider additional handicap access? So, because that could be in anything now.
Because we are, we are already ADA compliant.
Because it sort of indicates you're not, right?
Additional.
Consider additional.
So how do the lights work in the bathroom?
They leave a switch on and they're motion detected in.
There's motions in there.
So it's that same concept?
Yeah. And one of the other things I've thought about doing as part of our COVID protocol, COVID might be done here in a couple of months, but...
Yeah.
I'm saying that loosely. I hope everyone understands that Omicron may be the last serious spike, right? I mean, that's what the experts are saying.
Real.
And then we may be able to treat it like a lot of other viruses, like flu, right? So regardless, we went to all touchless soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers, but you still have to touch the sink to turn the water on. And you can get sinks that are touchless, that have Metar, it, Walmart, whatever. I don't know how expensive it would be, but it's probably something that we should consider. We've got probably two fixtures in each of these public bathrooms. We've probably got two more on the other side. The other thing is we don't have water bottle fillers in those. You can add those to the existing drinking fountains. It's touchless. You put the bottle in there, it fills it up, you pull it away. Little things. We had done that in our remodel project initially. You don't have to do them all, but they're all things that we can do to keep people from having to touch surfaces when you worry about germs.
So should we add that as a number three, excuse me, for short term operational, to expand our touchless surfaces?
I'd be more than happy to add that and figure out a way to make it happen.
That way, you know, it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but like Randy was saying, if it's up and behind us, we can talk about it.
Or you get the progress every month on it.
Yeah. Consider expanding touchless features.
That's what they are, right, feature? My daughter has that in her house, so, you know, this is like, that technology for water's been around a while.
Yeah. Commercial grade is going to cost more than that's a great option, but, yeah, it can be done. I've been done. It's very tough.
John, what did you say about the soap? I didn't hear about soap.
Touchless soap dispensers and paper towel dispensers. We already did that as well as hand sanitizer dispensers. You put your hand under there, you don't touch anything.
Right.
It recognizes you're there. It puts a gob of sanitizer or soap into your hand, and you didn't have to touch anything. But you have to touch the handle on the sink to turn the water on, to rinse your hands off after that. So that would be the next logical step, possibly here as well.
Okay.
When you go out of those bathrooms, do they just push? Like with your elbow? Or do you have to use your hand to pull it?
Yeah. But you should have clean hands then, so it's okay.
Yeah, well...
Yeah.
Yeah, we have trash cans right next to the door where if you...
Okay, so you can use your towel.
You use the towel, then you wash your hands with it, pull on. A lot of people do it.
Oh, yeah.
Very large, obviously.
All the healthcare providers do that.
Then two...
At the same time, how much are we jeopardizing our immune system by killing every year that we might come into contact with, right? We still want your immune system to work naturally, so there's drawbacks to everything we do.
In the future, I think you should look at less, less doors. Cut your doors out, like restrooms and that, because you don't have doors.
I wouldn't be anxious to remove restroom doors.
Yes, you do. You do. You have a...
It's a barrier in...
Barrier. You just walk around instead of... There's more and more companies doing that without...
Yeah, there's no doors, yeah.
A lot of public places, you're doing, taking doors off, but they're just the way they're building them. There's angle in it.
Yeah.
It's the way they're being built. That's it.
That's it, yeah.
We're not at a position to be redesigning spaces currently on an eight-year-old building, but certainly if we're looking at remodeling in the future, that might be an opportunity.
Okay. So number two under short term is getting young parents and young adults involved. I mean, it sounds great. I'm not sure how to do that, if we do a separate committee or if it becomes part of events
We'll work on that.
Yeah, I'll just leave it on there.
I think it's a personal ask.
See where that goes. So longer term, cross municipal agreement, we kind of already started that process by meeting with the city, and they're in the process of, I mean, their due diligence with their committees.
Well, we also have to do a feasibility study on our end to determine how much water we think we are going to need to determine a percentage of ownership. So that's another step, and I think everyone knows, Lenny's still got his hands pretty full. We'll get there eventually, but it's going to take some time.
Well, and once we talk about some of these other things, and he has, and you have direction on what we're going to do this year.
Well, the water, the water situation with the, we would be looking at that probably in '24, '25, anyway.
We really need to calm something down before that discount goes away, I think.
Well, and also, too, yeah, that's when our, our debt retirement comes off, too. So the money we're getting on that, we could transfer if we need it for the buy-in to the water, you know, facility if we need it.
What water facility are you talking about?
We're looking at doing the same thing we're looking at as the wastewater plant, be a part owner of the water treatment plant, but there's some things, hurdles we have to go through, so that's what we're going to do by '24, hopefully.
Yeah, but that means we've got to get our appeal for a feasibility study in the next couple of months, probably.
And if we can get this rolling and get it, get it set in stone by '24, then we'll have all the building blocks, and then we can just move forward and have like a timeline there. Because we have to have an intergovernmental agreement and probably have to set up an advisory board, like the wastewater plant, and just different things, you know, you got to do.
Have we heard anything from the city at all, have they...
Well, John and Lenny met with them, so I guess...
Well, John and I met with them.
Yeah, so maybe John can tell you. They were, I think, receptive to the idea.
I think everyone on the city's side is receptive to it. They recognize the benefit to them if we assume some of their liability. I think their utility funds are in better shape than their general funds, so it doesn't help them where they need it most, but ultimately, it helps them with reducing, I don't know if they have the filters for their water treatment plant or not, if they do for the wastewater plant, so...
Well, we're going to spend a, we're just, they're just spending $700,000 for replacement modules at the water treatment plant, so, and that happens every seven to 10 years, so we would help, we would have a stake in that.
So we own 5% to 10% of the water treatment plant, and we would be paying...
$70,000.
$35,000 to $70,000 for those filter replacements. But that ultimately changes the rate structure, how we purchase our water, too, and it makes it far less dependent on a court decision.
Correct.
Which we all know has been a problem in the past, depending on who's in charge at the city, right?
What I think, too, we have to do this within the next year or two because the city commission isn't going to change out super, a lot of members in the next few years, so if the board is apt to give us, get it done now, well, there's a favorable commission and a manager there that's favorable because you get a big election and it switches. It could go the other way, and then we're back to square one, so...
Well, the current mayor will be finished after this year as far as being the mayor, so there could be a new one, or there will be a new one, but she still has time on her term, and she and the manager and the assistant manager are all on board.
As is everyone at the staff level.
I don't know. Did they bring it to their board yet? They were going to do the study, too.
They're going to do a study without our involvement.
Okay. They're not independent? I don't know.
I'm just trying to get through what we have on our plate right now.
Good game.
So...
It's something that we have to be working towards at this point in time. It's not the top one, it's somewhere in the middle at this point in time.
Well, there's, there's not much to talk about until they know what our needs are going to be to serve what we currently have and what we would plan to expand into using city water. We know we want to go into the north of the district, so the well field would only be Chapel Ridge, and then any expansion beyond that, or, you know, 492 or South Indian Territory. So...
So I guess we'd have to figure out, like you said, our needs first, and then present it to them and see if they're willing to do anything with it.
Well, and we're right at a point where there's a lot of potential development lurking right beneath the surface. We don't know what kind of density of any of it is, so a lot of this is timely. We just have to accomplish it with the resources we currently have.
Well, we can do what we did with wastewater. We bought more than we needed, and we had extra, so it doesn't hurt to have extra.
Thank you. Definitely, we're leaving it on there. We know that.
Do you know at what level they're at with their plant for pumping water?
We have more...
50% capacity.
Yeah.
50% of capacity.
Yeah, we got plenty, we got plenty of capacity, and we can actually increase it if we had to.
Forget what it was, another 15 or 30% within the current building footprint.
Yeah. We had to.
So really, it's, whatever we decide to go forward is not really going to affect
So, really, it's, whatever we decide to go forward is not really gonna affect them, except whatever cost it is for additional pumping and that.
Well, I would see us if, if for some reason they gotta expand, and we're part owners, it's just like wastewater, we'd incur the cost of expansion like wastewater did when they did the upgrade, so.
I think that's the question, right, do we, will they have to consider expanding any of their services to meet anything that we need?
Well, city water needs are pretty much as is right now, they don't have much more room to grow within their current boundaries.
And if, if the filtration plant is currently at fifty percent of capacity, they can pump twice as much as they already are. And we are only sending city water to half of our customers' water. So, even if we doubled how many of our customers we send city water to, we're not meant to exceed that unused fifty percent. So it's a matter of long-term needs, if we get into that hundred fifteen, hundred thirty percent, whatever the number of them be.
Does that, that means, do our, will our wells be capable of handling any additional development without going additional distribution lines from the city to meet that needs too?
No. What we need to do is upgrade the pumping capabilities to COCs, to an ATCOCs. So, Lincoln Pump House in the city wasn't upgraded when the Johnson Control Project was done, because they could accomplish the same thing by going through Grove Pumps.
Grove Pumps.
And it was cheaper for them to do it that way. But the way the system was designed was to go through Lincoln. So, part of the discussion we had with staff was pursuing a project that upgrades Lincoln and Cox simultaneously, so we get the economies of scale and construction and the materials. Unfortunately, right now with material availability, might not be the best year to do it, so I'm, I'm not in a huge hurry to get going on that, we just need to start talking about it. And figuring out how we're going to procure the engineering services. I don't know if the city's interested in handling it themselves, if that's a little bit beyond their staff capabilities, if it's, we hire a consultant jointly, but I think it makes sense if we're done with one consultant for one project. And part of that also would be upgrading the SCADA on the township side to better communicate with the city system. If we're going to share ownership, we need to share information too. Right now, the water plant knows how full our tank is, but that's about all the information we share. Well, and I guess we have, we have meters that tell us how much water is going back and forth, so.
Can you guys do some kind of list or bullets of all these, between the two of you, figure out all the steps? So we kind of have a-
I just said it, you can definitely put it in paper.
Yeah.
Timeline, I can't give you that off the top of my head, because a lot of it, again, just like material availability, there's consultant availability issues too. So, we have to be strategic about it, to get it done at the right time.
But some of these can be done, you know, some can't, you'd have to have an engineer to do engineering stuff, but some of these other things might be able to be done.
When we have time, yes, as we clear other priorities off our plate, we move on to these.
But I think if we get all these, as Lynn says, the bullets all down, so we can, you look for the future, what, what do we have to address? These are all the things, we have to go into detail at this point in time, but different things that have to be addressed. And then you start prioritizing goals as to what you have to do.
Well, you move them from long-term goals to short-term goals, so you just move your stuff as your plate clears.
Until we get that, no one knows what, what we have to address on that.
Yeah, so, so we're not moving it, it's gonna stay right there, and we're gonna keep-
John, let me ask you, it might be a dumb question, but is it, in the future, if it's spanned out farther, is there a need for another tank anywhere?
Maybe. Top of Oak Hills comes to mind.
What's that?
Top of Oak Hills.
That's what I was thinking.
It's just one example, I'm not suggesting that, that be discussed tomorrow.
No, no, but I mean, I was just thinking-
Because they're not gonna be the ones that have to pay for it.
Because we're very close to, on four ninety-two, very close to Nagani, you know, they would come one way, we'd come the other way.
Yeah, no.
I know that was, we've talked about that.
A tank at Oak Hills isn't gonna benefit anything beyond Chapel Ridge of four ninety-two. In fact, we've already talked about the phase two, if we ever do that, there would be a tank up there, and that still wouldn't serve much of Nagani Township without a booster station, it would only be a place to store water.
I don't mean, I don't mean service Nagani, I mean the connection there if you ever need it.
Ultimately, that should be the goal.
Yeah.
To have all of these small systems interconnected.
Because they got more water than they need, they're not even pumping the other one one.
Yeah.
These are all the things you have to put down on paper to look at, and then decide what you want, which direction you want to go with.
Because it's not stuff we're familiar with on a daily basis, so that's why I was saying, you guys can let us know what steps are, even if they're not in order.
We know what we ultimately need to do, it's a matter of prioritizing the time to focus on it at the right time. The feasibility study, I think, needs to be priority number one. It might result in a booster station upgrade project before it's done, or it may not, it may not happen until we purchase ownership, and the city realizes that if they want us to ship their water to more parts of the township so they can sell us more water, then maybe they will see a reason to upgrade Lincoln.
Okay. Longer term, number two resolves storage for the township by the end of next year. Some of that-
What?
Resolves storage for the township.
And that's on the-
You're not talking water storage?
That's on this list.
Yeah, it's on the project list.
Yes, so we can kind of skip, I mean, leave it on there, but we don't need to talk about it too much, because we're gonna hit that in a minute.
Yeah, by the end of twenty twenty-three is really gonna depend on how this part of the discussion goes today. And I don't know that we'd get a building constructed that quick either.
Or do we bump it out a couple more years, like twenty-five or something like that?
I would suggest changing that twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of big spending going on currently.
But the other ones don't have dates, so why do we even have a date?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we just take the date off?
Just take the data.
Because this is a five-year plan anyway.
Yeah, just take the data off.
Take the data off.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's multiple storage issues, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's equipment, it's piles.
Yeah.
Maybe not so much staff anymore.
Yeah.
I think the internal movement that we've made is address that issue, so.
Okay.
Okay, create a township center park with ban shell playground and adult records.
That's this property right here, which we don't know the status of.
So, we'll just leave that on there.
Yeah, because first we gotta get the land.
Diversify development and retail through strategic partnerships, strategic partnerships.
From retail to other things like R and D, research and development, that kind of thing. So, a more diverse commercial industrial tax base.
Have we had any interest from any developer or anything else in that direction in the township?
I think there's some out there, we don't necessarily hear about it until a client comes to us, meaning the developers, the local developers are talking to the interested parties, and when they have an agreement on the sale of the land, then they do a site plan and submit it to us for planning commissioner or planning department to review, and then we hear about it. But I wouldn't say there's been people pounding on our door, say, in the medical instrument manufacturing field, for instance, because that's one that happens to become in the coming current. Nobody's coming to us saying this is what we intend to do, or we need to do. The process here has generally gone through who owns the property. Same thing with commercial too.
Anything we can do as a township to try and enhance the availability of land for something like that?
Not if we don't own it.
Yeah, I don't understand why this is on here, I, I get the intent, but I think it's out of our control. It might say encourage or work with, something like that, but I don't know that this is something we can plan on doing for the next five years.
But I've seen advertising for other communities about the availability of developing certain types of businesses. They may not own the land, but they kind of enhance their area for things and that, to try and get developers thinking about moving stuff in.
Sure, they reduce their taxes.
Well, we talked a bunch of years ago about either hiring or creating internally some kind of a marketing, whatever, person or department, and we just didn't want to go that way, so, you know, the board feels like they want to take something like that on.
This to me sounds exactly like the type of partnership we want with LSCP.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Yeah.
There are people looking, right now, there are people, you know, looking around right now, their area or something.
Well, when we talk to Lake Superior Community Partnership, maybe that's a good thing for them to market for us.
She'll be here on first.
And, and maybe we did some of this already, because we are setting up a strategic partnership with Lake Superior Community Development. I mean, think, think a little broader than getting a business in your corner kind of thing, you're trying to create relationships, so.
I do agree, though, I think that's sort of not in our control, so maybe that should just be out.
Especially since we already-
That's all you can do is make your community attractive to developers. What do you have in your area, how do you take care of it?
And we already are.
Right, so that, that's what it, that's basically what it is.
It's why we're experiencing this.
Yeah.
I take that right off, I'm gonna take it right off.
Well, we know the wire, partnership's gonna work on it, that's what we are gonna pay them, three hundred.
I think it's something we have to cultivate with the partnership, and that.
Yeah, yeah, and they're not very expensive, for three hundred bucks, if they get us a business.
Well, it depends what we want them to do for us. If we have a specific project, we'll pay them.
Oh, well, right, right, that's how that always works, but, you know, really, they're out there, they wanna be, they wanna be needed, they want to continue to survive, so they need to market to continue to survive, or people won't join. That's how it works.
Sustainable revenue generation to fund our needs, this is kind of like a given, I'm not sure why this is on here either.
And the challenge there becomes what the state gives, the state can take it away, and unfunded mandates over and over and over again, and if they can do it in the name of public health, you have no way of saying it's an unfunded mandate, even though it is. If it's in the name of public health, they're exempt from that requirement, so. I think sustainable revenue and expenses is important. I mean, that's what we've talked about since day one of contract negotiations, going back to the end of August. Everything has to be sustainable, or it will never happen, right? So.
Okay, so we can leave this on here then, revenue and expenses, as a little angel on your shoulder to say, hey, are we doing this? You know, just one more time to look at it.
We need to remind ourselves constantly. It's actually one of those words that you get tired of hearing, but it's necessary.
Okay. I think, well, we just recently went through the master plan goals. Transportation, and this falls back toward the planning. You wanna take the time to go back through these? I think we hit the important ones that are gonna be up on the wall.
I did have a problem with it, the rest of these are just statements, really, I mean, we read it on-
Do you want to add industrial, go number three, it covers everything but.
Industry?
Do you want industry? I mean, that goes back to the conversation we just had about how do we encourage diversification of our tax base. There's only certain kinds of industries we're gonna get in our general business district anyway, because certain types of activities will be prohibited based on what they actually do, noise, smell, whatever, so.
So you want us to add it, like, services to support the residential, industrial, commercial, is that what you're thinking, add it right in the narrative?
I was just throwing that out there.
We don't want to eliminate one, or?
Well, basically, any, any business or industry's gonna have to be clean industry. Like you say, you can't have no smokes, dust, all these other things, so they're gonna be farther out.
Well, and what kind of inventory do you have to lay down outside your building too?
Yeah.
Appearance also, right?
Right.
So what page are you on?
Seventeen.
Is that you, John?
So, goal number three that says public services and infrastructure?
Yep.
Coming from your area.
Yep, yours, Peter? Not me.
About to shut it off.
For the rest of the area, so, and what, do you wanted to add industrial with commercial?
It just sounded like me.
I was asking the question.
Yeah, it's coming from your side.
So, is commercial not industrial, is that what you're saying?
Commercial and industrial are two separate classes.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure what the extent of our industrial is only is for our certain industrial uses allowed in our general business.
I would have to refresh myself too, but on top of that, probably require a specialty use permit or other approvals beyond this, like-
Maybe, maybe we're just putting hairs between the two of them alone, that's fine.
Well, no, I don't know, because it's, it's a facet that we aren't including in here, so I agree, it should be in there, if we don't have it-
Insert industrial right after commercial.
So you're thinking like, someone coming in and doing medical equipment is industrial?
Research and development of whatever. It could be a brand-new bicycle components manufacturer, whatever, not just retail, research and development of products.
Yeah, laboratories.
I like research, yeah, people have a different picture of research than industry, that they're different, but they have a different picture in their brain.
That was a good point, John. Recreation, we hit over and over, economic development again. That's a statement, recreation again, how did we end up, oh, I got two pages the same.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like it's a whole repeat, because they have different page numbers, so it's a duplicate.
They're the same goals.
It's better.
All right, housing, we know we're working on that, that's a master plan goal anyway. Government, we're good, if we could get rid of state and federal, we'd be fine.
But we kept the money.
Well, that's exactly, you can't exactly give up the revenue sharing.
Transportation. I haven't gotten an answer, speaking of that, we're losing Dylan Klein on the DDA board, so I sent an application for a replacement to see if we could keep transportation on the DDA. I, I think that's real important, and the, the board did too. So, he's afraid that he can't step into something that he doesn't know, and I said to her, that's the best way to learn.
That's-
The ground up.
He only followed on and get up, it's not that bad.
Safety and security, so we're working on that, well, this is for transportation. System improvement, we're on that. Efficient operations. Need objectives. Recreation plan.
And the goals from the rec plan are already established, the vast plan is already updated.
Okay, I think that's it, so we know what we want to put on the priority goals for the twenty twenty-two review. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven main ones then, it's more than enough. Okay, so I'm thinking-
So we'll probably need a motion to accept the strategic plan as amended.
Do we want to do it here, or do we want to do it in a meeting?
I think we can do it here, that's why we have a-
I know we did, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay.
That we approve the strategic plan as amended from today.
Well, we haven't talked about fire alarm or, or anything else, is this all part of it?
That's not part of that, no.
Okay, make sure I understand.
But it falls into the plan sideways?
Okay, I wanna make sure I, what we're, where we're at.
You didn't, you didn't miss it, yeah.
Some of the CIP there, I'll kind of tie it together.
Okay, okay.
So are you good ranting?
Yeah.
So, any comments on that?
So, do you have, Lynn, do you have the, the main one, you can change then?
I, yeah, I should have, because I printed this one.
So you can change it and then send it back out then, okay.
Or you can forward it to me and I can make that.
Yeah, 'cause you'll be the one printing it, or Lenny or somebody.
I'll have Lenny help me print the copy.
How did you get it, Bob, Lenny?
I was yelling at the machine the other day, so I was trying to figure it out.
It's outside my office.
Well, I guess we figure out where it's gonna go, and how, then you know how big it's gonna be, and how big the type has to be. If it's close to the board wall, we won't be binoculars to see it. Okay, so that's done.
Limits of.
We haven't voted yet.
Yes, I wanna make sure we don't have any other questions. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. All right.
Now, we really didn't ask staff what their goals were.
So that was all part of the discussion we were here, when we talked about it. And I think some of the more immediate needs are what we need to talk about before closing out this item on the agenda.
Yep, you can take this one.
Okay.
You didn't have a chance to read it, John was worried about that, but.
Yeah, so I can summarize my memo, since I, it wasn't in the packet, you wouldn't have had a chance to review it before coming. Our ARPA funding has had the most significant attached strings removed, in that the final rule from the federal government says, any municipal distribution of ARPA funds less than ten million dollars, you can declare a standard allocation and use all of your funds under ten million dollars for general government services. So that could include anything from staffing to you name it. I don't recommend funding staffing, because once the money's gone, now how do you pay for staffing, right? So it's gotta be things that you might not otherwise be able to retain. So we came up with this list through conversations with, well, Dan and Lenny in particular, but, um, other issues that have come up to my attention in a short time I've been in the position. And there's really this list of five items that far exceed the amount of money we have. Call it four hundred and seven thousand dollars, that's really what we have.
Is that what we have, four hundred and seven thousand?
We only have half of it so far.
Right, how we're getting.
We'll get the second half this year.
Okay, John, just a point of order, um, ARPA fund does have something to do with strategic planning, so we can talk about it. But I wouldn't recommend a motion on any of this until the next meeting, um, because it's not.
They are separate, yeah.
Because they are, they're related, but they're not separate, and I don't wanna get into.
I, I think at, at least discussing the prioritization of these five items so that.
Is, is okay, yeah.
Make a motion at a, at a regular meeting, maybe put it on the next agenda.
Agenda, yeah, ARPA, like the ARPA funding priorities.
And that will help us with our very first report on what we intend to do with funding. We can, we don't have to do anything until the end of 2024 with this money.
I just don't want someone from the public saying, well, you know, it wasn't on your agenda, and you guys made a motion and that, I just don't want that happening, so.
John, I had that discussion quite before this, and I said, yeah, it's a special meeting, so we can make a motion, but we need a workshop-type discussion on these, so staff knows what to do.
Correct.
And there's a lot of details to each of these that you need to be aware of before you start prioritizing.
Okay, so I just, I have one question. So, so we have four hundred and seven thousand unexpected money, let's call that, that's additional money. How much money do we have in our capital improvement fund?
I can't tell you that, because it's spread over multiple funds.
But we do have money in our capital improvement funds, our fund projects.
We do.
Okay, all right, just so, just so we're clear, 'cause I, like, in my home budget, I, like, know what I got in my pots.
Yeah, and I can't give you those, that's too complicated an answer off the top of my head. I have to have the budget book and start adding numbers.
Because we need, we need to know that, because we're spending money.
Okay, but you also have to understand that a lot of the money in the capital improvement fund has already been allocated. You, you have previously approved the CIP, all right? So, anything beyond that is either not gonna happen this year, or you have to find new sources of revenue for.
Right, and we did approve some of these things in here for the CIP. We approved that hydro excavator, and we certainly talked about the roof repairs in the CIP.
We did.
Okay.
That doesn't mean we automatically funded them, or the ARPA funding wouldn't be more appropriate.
So we could fund something else.
So let me get into the minutia of these five items.
Now, go ahead.
All right, so the, the roof, it's the roof over the old fire hall, not the new addition, the original building, building constructed in the early seventies, okay, it's fifty years old. It held up for fifty years, but we had a real heavy dense snow to start the year twenty eighteen, so I wasn't here yet. We hired a contractor to get the snow off, and then it was kind of back burner, because the immediate urgency was resolved. Since then, there's been two different people in the superintendent of public works position, myself and now Lenny. So we lost some time there in the transition, right, you can't just, well, we should have, I should say, made that number-one priority of the person that was departing, as well as the two new people coming in, because it's a significant safety issue for people occupying the building. I think it would be a perfect opportunity to fix a problem with funding we didn't intend to have, but we have some concerns in that the rope we have taken so far has not gotten into the public advertising that we would need to follow to spend the federal funding. Hall contracting that built the addition over there actually took the time to come and look at it and value-engineer a project that went from a spitball number of a half a million to a budget number of just over two hundred thousand. So we changed that half a million to a quarter million. If we want to use federal funding, we're gonna have to bid this out and basically start over with any contractor that's interested. When we started this, Hall was the only contractor that was responsive, okay? It's not to say that Klosner or somebody else wouldn't be interested, but they weren't when we started. And we've gone down this path of value-engineering it with the contractor, I don't think we're in a position that we should change course right now. So that being the case, I'm sort of half recommending that existing reserves we use to fund this project, because it's far more affordable, and we don't have to follow as strict of a procurement process as federal funding would require.
And it would be split amongst the funds.
It would be split fifty-fifty between water and food. So if we negotiated a contract with Hall as a design build, the design's done, Hall would be doing the construction with their value-engineered method, which means you don't tear the whole roof off of the old fire hall to get the beams in place, because they have to add more structural beams to support the weight, so it doesn't fail. We don't have to start the process all over again and lose potentially another year. We still might, we don't know what Hall's availability is, because it'll be done before next year, all right? So that's the first one. Let me get through all five before you start determining whether or not that's a top priority for the ARPA funding. I think it should still be the top priority of all five on this list, because it's a significant safety issue for people that occupy that building on a daily basis, but it may not be the top priority for ARPA funds. Ambulance, we have two, apparently, both were purchased used. Dan can probably tell you what is happening as far as, uh, annual maintenance cost on them. You can only imagine, the older equipment gets, the more expensive it is to keep it on the road.
Yeah, I'll be brief, yeah, the first one, we purchased the two thousand and six. Um, that motor, they're not anticipating to last much longer. That's according to, and it's that engine, that six-point-three diesel? I don't know, I'm not a mechanic, but everybody said that that's the worst engine made. So that engine is ready to go. It's, it's sitting right now, it's usable, but we don't know when it's gonna go, we're going through a lot of antifreeze, burning oil, those types of things. And it's either a head gasket, I mean, it can be repaired, they figure between ten and twelve thousand dollars, and probably out of service for, if we can find somebody to work on it. That's an issue today, too, nobody will work on it. And the other one, eh, the older one we purchased from Palmer, what, a year and a half ago now? It's just old, it's twelve, thirty, twenty-three years old, it's, it's seeing its day, you know, they're breaking down. So I, I think that's a high priority, especially with our call volume, and if we do take one out of service, we still need that other one. We don't need two, but we need one that's very reliable, then one that's semi-reliable.
And which one would you keep then?
Oh, we'd keep the one from Palmer, the older of the two. The one we bought originally in twenty eighteen from Delta Township. We would, to anybody that wanted it, 'cause it's that six-point-three liter engine, and nobody will work on it. And they're guestimating twelve to fourteen thousand to repair it, and I think we paid eighteen for the engines.
So you just put it out on beds, and whoever wants it.
They can hang them, you're right, you're right, but that's where we're at with that one.
What do you think it's worth?
It isn't much.
It's not much, we paid eighteen for it, that's for an, you know.
Paid eighteen, and you've got ten to twelve to put it in the engine.
Yeah.
Somebody might offer you five for it.
Right, it's not, they're not worth much.
I was just looking for more.
You keep all the equipment inside it.
Oh, we would keep everything, yes, yep.
So did, did Mike apply for a grant?
Yeah, well, yes, yep.
So that's the other catch to the whole ambulance.
That's what, yeah.
Maybe, maybe you keep it a high priority, but you don't allocate funding to it right away, pending the outcome of the grant application. The challenge is, how long can you wait?
Right.
To get word on a grant application, if you don't get the grant, now we're scrambling at the end of the year, right?
But they tell you when the grant applications are due and when the amount will be sent. You'll be notified, it's in the application.
By September, hopefully.
So my point being.
And then you got, then you got eighteen-month build-out yet.
Correct, I, I mean, I get that.
Right, so I was just saying, it, it is a time-sensitive thing, if we didn't know, you know.
And that there's no money set aside for an ambulance?
No, well, no.
Can, can you do this, can we move ahead and start the process for ordering the ambulance with, with, say, two hundred and fifty thousand sent here? Now, if the grant comes through in the fall, all of a sudden, that two hundred and fifty thousand can be reverted back to something else? Can we do it that way?
I don't know that you're allowed to commit the funding before you get the grant, correct, that's the problem.
That's all.
They're probably not.
No, I, I, I'm saying, is commit the two hundred and fifty thousand from the ARPA here.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Keep, keep that there, so if we do a additional money, now that ARPA money comes back to the township?
So what you're saying is, you wanna buy the ambulance.
What kind of grant is it?
And see how it's paid for later.
It's five percent matcha grant, five percent.
Yeah, it's not much.
But we can't.
Okay, so, then we get the second new ambulance, if we only have to pay five percent. Then we got two new ones.
Oh, I'm just saying, yeah, okay, I like the way you think.
Well, it's, it's, wouldn't be a bad idea, get this one, because we need it. We're gonna need it before two years. I know, we're gonna need it before two years, so get, get the money allocated for this, for the new one, that, that the grant, do what the grant does, if we get it, we pay five percent, we got two brand-new ambulances.
Well, the other thing is, there is money being made on the ambulance.
Yes.
And there is no reason why that, some of that money can't be turned back over to the township.
And that was just discussed for the first.
Imagine that, huh?
Time, or recent, within the last six months.
I mean, there can be, you can.
Because there was always that fine line of what's ambulance money, what's not, and you would need a CPA, at least a CPA to figure out.
How much, how much additional principal you pay at the end of the year on the building versus socking the money aside as ambulance revenue.
Well, you know.
The ambulance revenue doesn't have to be spent at the end of the year.
No, no.
Only the special assessment revenue. So, very, making sure we're keeping that money tracked separately, is the key.
I, I agree with Dan, though, if the worst-case scenario, we got two brand-new ambulances, and it'll be set for the next twenty years.
Exactly, and there's, there's, not a lot, but there's several times where we get back-to-back calls, and we have, we need that second ambulance. So it's, for five percent, gosh, that's a no-brainer to me.
Well, and then we have to really start thinking about replacement costs from day one. We need to start moving money for replacement.
Twenty years down the road.
Yeah, I don't know if the government has not allowed people to do that, but, you know.
Correct, correct.
This is what happens to your personal life, is you like, gotta take a big loan out to replace the furnace.
Yeah.
We, we need to do a better job.
Well, 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 I'm sure you're aware that we are not allowed to save any money.
Oh, yeah.
It's very, very difficult.
Act thirty-three.
And then to try and figure out that, that what's, what is true EMS revenue versus not. Like I said, you better, you better be, have a very good CPA to figure that out exactly what is what.
I would be careful not saying CPA, because you don't need a CPA, you need a qualified accountant.
Yeah.
CPA is a title that needs more, more time.
That was an exaggeration, it was a point, I was trying to make a point.
Or you need a good computer program.
A good accountant, yeah.
There's a lot to it.
Yeah, well, and you know, that, that's what you pay for, so you get your, yeah.
So I, I agree with Dan, I think we should fund that two fifty thousand for that ambulance now, 'cause it's gonna be eighteen months before we get it anyway.
So we've got two that we want for sure now, let's go through the rest of the list, John. Because we may want, we have five that we wanna do now.
The storage facility is probably the most problematic on the list, just based on the estimated cost. And I can tell you, the eighteen hundred square feet that we have in here, that's the number that fire department needs. It doesn't add a second story. But, we used a pretty high cost per square foot to get the five hundred and fifty thousand, so maybe you only, you only need a second story for part of the building, right? For the storage. The cost that we're accruing on an annual basis for the rental units down here would have a very long rate of return.
Payback.
Build our own storage facility over here. So, I'm not as concerned about that, other than the fact that they're not necessarily in our control. Somebody goes over there and cuts a lock, all of our files can be jeopardized.
Yeah, we don't have.
It's our own facility, they've got a break-in, and now that's a much bigger deal from a prime perspective, because it's government property.
You're not gonna pay for the, through the rent, since they cut back on that rent.
Right, it's gonna take many years of, of facility payments of our own to offset what we're paying down the road, so. Would I love to see it, yeah, but that cost, we, we can't even cover it with our ARPA funds.
So when would we need to get another storage area, building, garage, how, how, how full is that?
It's very helpful, it's keeping.
No, how full?
A full hall, I don't know.
Well, and I would guess in a much or less paper's gonna have to be saved, and more electronic things are gonna be saved.
Well, and a lot of the files that are over there have not been properly purged either.
Yeah, it's probably time to.
Boxes have been hauled over there without going through them compared to a retention schedule, I'm guessing.
Well, some of that's payroll that you have to keep forever, so it's not going away, but.
I don't know, do you think you still have to keep payroll forever?
There's retention records, some of them.
Well, then it's time to move to electronic payroll, because those are a lot easier to store.
We still have to keep originals on a lot of that stuff. We still have to keep originals.
Yeah, but you can save a lot of stuff electronically.
Yeah, that may not even be the stuff you have to keep original, though.
They want the paper copies, because electronic media over time changes, and if you store it in this format down ten years, you might find a field access.
Well, and all those sales receipts or whatever you bought and stapled to that check stub fade away, and you can't read them, so.
That kinda stuff, if you've got payables, that could go.
Yeah, and I'm guessing that's down there.
Seven years.
All, all, I would probably bet it's down there. Those you want scanned.
Regardless, somebody's gotta go sit down.
Storage investment.
Correct, correct.
Well, let me ask you this, John, could we build a small storage unit on this parcel somewhere? Just for storage, our storage needs here, and that, and in the fire department, and have their own storage garage over there? Have just two separate buildings?
You certainly can, but your cost is gonna go up from the five fifty we already have.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have, we can prioritize, which one do we need first? If we need a storage building for, for filing and files, I don't see why we can't build something right here.
I think we can, I, we just have to make sure.
We gotta make sure about.
The covenant.
How the deed is set up.
It's gotta comply with the deed restrictions relative to aesthetics of the structure. So we'll have a brick veneer, um. So we'll have a brick veneer, um, that kind of thing.
How much do we own back here?
We've got the land already.
Yeah.
So I don't see why a storage unit couldn't be there, or even add it onto this building, so they don't have to go outside, they can just go through and get into it, and then do the storage for the fire department.
There's a door right down there.
Yeah.
How much property do we own behind you, John?
Well, you're not building over there.
We can't, we can't build that way, it's detention and wetland.
You go that way, Pete, that way.
And you don't wanna go out, because then you need an elevator.
Well, we can go out.
Yeah.
And if it's, if it's, how many storage buildings do we have?
Two.
Two, ten by twenty, so we double that and add on here.
Yeah, I, certainly can be done. Um, we probably need to get some preliminary opinions of probable cost again, which is beyond what your staff can do, so we'll have to basically review that.
I think that's, that step is important, because we've talked about this for too many years and we know we're still paying for storage. We didn't even know, this board didn't even know we had storage, garages over there.
Well...
And we don't know what's over there, right?
It's not the money, it's just the control of the records, because it's like John says, if someone goes in and torches our records over there, then it's not very good, yeah. Where at least here, we have more control on this property.
Well, originally, when we started talking about storage in general, we were looking at it from the perspective of the whole township, right? And then Dan got his money in, you know, his hands in the till and said, "But I need a new building." So we tried to figure out how to, how to accommodate everything. And would that be cheaper to just either add on and put our stuff over there too, or have another building that had, you know, vehicles and everything? We looked at this property. So we chewed on all this for quite a while and how to do it. And now we're kind of getting to the point where they need more than the original plan was even talked about. And it makes sense to have it over there. Do you have enough room for this eighteen hundred square feet where you are?
Yeah. Most likely, we need to do a boundary survey over there, which Dan didn't wanna... Dan didn't wanna pay for it out of his budget, because his budget's so tight as this. He had a estimate to do it, or a proposal to do it. I can't remember what it was. Three million.
The re, oh, the, the, oh, the boundary, eighteen hundred or something, I thought, eighteen hundred?
But, that's the cost of a commercial boundary survey these days.
But then it's done, right? You don't have to do it again.
Well, unless you lose your irons, which can happen, they get very, uh...
Well, with a flight.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
That should be fine.
Yeah.
But things happen.
Well, they certainly do. That's why Lynn said get our storage done over there.
Well, that sounds like the first thing we have to do is get the boundary done for eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I would say, get that done.
I'd say, just get it, get it done.
And then get a price on a storage building.
Is the board okay with funding that boundary survey?
Can we have it? For eighteen hundred?
The, the fund balance isn't in as good shape currently as it has been in years, because the dark store refunds have been tapering off.
We gotta be, uh, well, we span them too.
But now is the time, if you're gonna do something like that, to figure it out.
Well, we can, if we can do it, and now is the time, then let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Dan, remind me, we should get that proposal updated? To do the boundary survey, they might not do it until spring now. But if we get it authorized, they can at least get it in their schedule, and we should put it on the next agenda.
Well, I have a question though. By doing that, are we kind of pushing development of a building over that area? Or are we just doing it to get it done for people?
I think we're, I think we're moving to that area, yeah. I think that's probably the best.
It has to be done anyway.
It's the best...
I know it has to be done, I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
We're not gonna go off on something that we're not gonna utilize in that, at that point.
You know, interestingly, we're thinking about buildings on both properties, maybe we need to have both boundary surveys done. In which case, I can handle that, yeah.
We talked about before, when they're building that place, that if we ever had to have our own police department, the police department office would be on this, on the north end of that building over there, where the rec room is. Who knows, if you're gonna need a police department in five, six, ten years from now.
That could go over here too.
Yeah, but they can decide that, maybe five, six, ten years.
We also have a parcel over up, up four ninety-two, we could reserve for that if we wanted to, but...
No, you don't want it separate, you want it right close.
Then we have backup on our, to, to all of them.
Keep it all together.
We'll have more money if we sell that property over there, so.
We sell the property over there and we could probably fund most of these two facilities that we need.
Right, so that should be our goal, sell the property and fund the...
Well, if there is some semi-interest over there, we don't have a realtor right now, we keep more in our pocket.
Yeah, and maybe you do just build one building, because it's not feasible, price wise, it makes more sense, but...
Just be careful what you sell, because they're not making any more.
If we're looking at a realtor, I would like to look at multiple realtors.
Oh, yeah.
Not, not just, not the one that we have.
Yeah.
I'm not interested.
I don't wanna give six percent away.
What?
If we don't have to. Developers know that that's available.
Okay.
Okay, let's see how that plays out before...
There's been interested parties, they just haven't responded to us recently, so I think it's time for us to reach back out to them and say, what gives?
Have we told them that we are...
They know.
They know that we're contemplating, or they know that it's a bad deal?
They know it's available.
Okay.
Do we have a price?
Five hundred thousand.
Okay.
I tried to buy, John, I tried to buy the house next to us here. You know, I talked to, talked to him and asked him if he wanted to sell it. I said, "Well, give me a price." "What are you gonna do with it?" He said, "We'll rent it out." But then I thought, "Well, if I die, you can, we can beat it over to the township." So, but he want, he want too much, I said, "What the hell are you talking about?"
Don't want to sell.
It'll take me, take me two years just to paint the damn thing to get rid of the dead wood in it. But it, but the property wise, because he's holding up the road over there.
Randy talked about approaching him too and asking him to sell it, so that we could go that way. We have, you know, a walkway, we could have more offices or storage or whatever we wanted over there.
I don't think we're hurting our office space, and I don't know that we will be for a while. I might regret saying those words out loud, but we've actually recently gone in a positive direction, office space wise, so I'm not concerned about that, we need a, it's probably a ten year prop, not a five year prop, so.
Okay. Next one?
Okay, so, so, item three is split into two, and we're gonna have to come back to you on that. And we don't have to rush, right, we got until the end of twenty twenty-four.
What do we do on the ambulance? Did we come up with any kind of...
We're gonna get two loans.
Why not?
It hasn't even been bid out, you, I mean, we don't even know if that's really the price.
Yeah. Oh, we've, oh, we've, not completely expected, oh, yeah, we've, yeah, we had you to put the grant in.
Oh, well, see, so you already have that.
That's a good budget number, yeah.
What I'm saying is, you're talking about two, on the board meeting, on two...
No.
Are we gonna address anything on the ambulance?
No, we're just being... You want to?
No, oh, I want to. I don't know that us even order...
They're not.
I don't wanna do anything, I'm just saying, we might jeopardize the grant if we do anything right now. That's, I'd just like to say that.
So you wanna wait till September?
Correct.
We might jeopardize the grant.
Sure, because then you don't really need the grant, because then they, yeah.
So we should wait till...
You have to play a game.
That answers the question.
Well, another thing too with the ambulance is, I'm working with Roger right now to re-up the fire millage, equipment millage, because it actually expires next year, and we really don't wanna have a special election next year.
Oh, yeah.
So Roger's working to put it on the November of this year, so we'll re-up it for, I don't know, what, four years or whatever, so...
At the same level?
Same level, and then we could end up with money there too.
To buy an ambulance.
For equipment, yeah, so...
Is an ambulance considered in that fire?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
You know, those are easy sells, because everybody potentially uses an ambulance.
Well, when you get this new fire truck, Dan, what's the next, the aerial is the next one probably, or what?
It's probably gonna be the tanker, unfortunately.
And how, how many years?
The aerial's the oldest, it's a ninety-four, it's in best shape.
But how many years are you looking at before you need the new pumper?
Before we replace that to tanker?
Yeah, the tanker.
Uh, length goes, hopefully we can do it in five, the goal's five, we plan on six.
Oh, so you would have enough money now.
Yeah, we would be able to, and I want, we want to be able to do it pay cash.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's our newest vehicle.
I'm just, I'm just looking at if that's your need and a new ambulance is your need. Maybe we, maybe we should go for one additional mill or something. Or a point, whatever, maybe one point.
We're going six.
Yeah, go to...
Oh, you could have go to one point six, we'll be up.
Or like point eight or something.
I think, I think we're in a good program with this point six. I hope we are, unless I die, you know, I just don't wanna...
Well, anyway, that's just a thought, because I mean, the millage is gonna come out this year, so...
So let's back up, like Ernie said, so we're not really gonna talk about the ambulance until September?
I wish we could, you know, I just, I feel as though we're gonna jeopardize the grant if we did anything else. Because you cannot have an order or any, and it doesn't, this, you know, specifically say, you can't have any money, with everybody, with everybody getting ARPA money this year, I don't know how that's gonna play out for something like that.
So the question here is, if we come up with even one of these priorities that doesn't include the ambulance, we need to save some money for the ambulance, right?
Hopefully.
You could, or save some money for whatever.
My recommendation would be to put these in your prioritized order in a public meeting, and you not allocate ARPA funds to anything unless you know that's what you intend to do right now.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, just wait and see, you don't have to spend...
So that, put the list on hold until fall?
Well, we could definitely wait until we hear on the grants. Because if, if they're unsuccessful with the grant, you know what your new priority, number one is, assuming the last two items don't change your mind.
Well, we didn't get that far, so...
Well, that's what we gotta finish doing here.
So the smartest thing, because of the roof, needs to be the...
No, I appreciate it, though, I do, I just don't wanna jeopardize.
I, I didn't know that.
Even, even doing this.
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I said, "Yeah, stop it, you guys."
Well...
Either share.
We're back on the ambulance.
But that's fine, just share with everybody.
They're fighting over one or two.
Okay, well, right now, we don't have any.
I just think the public works roof, like John said before, should be split amongst the funds and be done right away.
So that's a priority, because it's a priority.
It's not gonna tie your hands on the procurement process, we will stay within our procedures, because we're doing what's in the best interest of the township by maintaining a relationship with the contractor that built the addition, that's done the value engineering with our architect, a structural engineer, to get the cost to a far more affordable level than the dark board number we had come up with. This budget number of two fifty is a conservative number. We think we can negotiate a design build agreement with them for, bear with me, under one seventy-five.
And I think they should pay for it out of their funds, because that building does not service everyone in the county.
Okay, but, when it was the fire hall, it certainly did.
And it, yeah.
Lenny's not here, but if I listen to what the public works department says, they were forced to take a building they didn't want.
Yeah, I don't know that part.
That's probably fifty fifty, probably half right, probably half right.
I'm a firm believer that there's more than one side to every argument, right? I'm just saying, when you hear people refer to a building as a polished turd, unfortunately, that's being recorded. It means there were some deficiencies, which I'm sure the fire department was more than happy to move into something new, right? Because of, while it was severely undersized for what you needed, number one. But I'm also sure that the public works department is thrilled to be inside.
Yeah.
Previously, all the trucks sat outside all the time.
Well, they didn't have any space where they were.
They were spread all over the township.
So, just looking at it objectively, saying this is on you to fix when they inherited the problem the way it was originally built, isn't necessarily their fault, but if it means it's the quickest way to get it done, then that probably makes the most sense.
So should that stay on the ARPA funding then? Because if we're not gonna even deal with ARPA funding with it, it should be taken off.
If, if you as a board are comfortable with that, Lenny and I are gonna have to look at the number that we've lost before she needs to make sure, because we don't have all of the reserves in water and sewer itemized as far as what's already earmarked, we gotta make sure. Because we're gonna have to take money away from something else to put it into the facility line, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm okay with that, it's a project that we can figure out internally, we can scratch it off the list when we're down to four.
I think that's what we should do then, because it really isn't an ARPA...
Put together the figures and, Brad, we'll move forward.
Yeah, and if something happens, you know what, we're gonna have to fund it.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's the top priority, because it's the biggest safety issue we have. And then the rest of them, it really depends on what's more important to you. We know we should hold off on committing to an ambulance until we hear on the grant success, for lack thereof. Storage facility, we have more work to do, because we're looking at possibly two buildings. Forestville Road was never done from Wright Street to Huron Woods, because there was a grant that the road commission applied for to do that part, and that was ultimately to improve the safety at that intersection. They spent the money on Wright Street, when Wright Street was moved down. So Forestville Road had a little bit of an improvement right at the approach, but not a significant improvement that would have addressed what didn't get done with the millage. I think it's a good project, we've got fifty thousand in the budget this year that we intentionally haven't allocated to, because number one, staff is getting up to speed on road soft, right? Pazer ratings, I don't even know if you've gotten, gotten the pazer training yet. The road soft, I don't even done most of that, but... So, so we've got, we've got some catch up to do with staff turnover there. But we also have with Forestville Road, the potential impacts of infrastructure expansion of that road, that might have to tear it up. So, if that's gonna happen in the next five years, I don't think the township should be paving, overlaying that, that portion of the road to the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, okay?
And tear it up right away, yeah.
Right, but, if any proposed development out there isn't gonna happen for five to ten years, we can't let it sit that long. We have to do it sooner than later. So, we think there's a meeting coming up with prospective developers up there sometime in the next couple of weeks. I don't know if Jason was able to schedule anything, because he's been out for a few days here, but when that comes up, maybe they'll give us a better idea on their schedule. My suggestion is, if we know we've gotta spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pave that section of road, and the developer's gonna be tearing it up in the next five years, we save our money and give that, offer that as an incentive to help improve with, or help the developer improve that portion of the road with, with a proper realignment of the intersection. Okay? Yeah, we're only paying for an overlay, but a hundred and seventy-five thousand towards whatever it cost them to dig it all up, put in their sewer, and put it back together, maybe it goes a long way towards saving them enough to justify the cost of that length of sewer. Plus, it also gets the public's move closer to Huron Woods if they ever needed when separate fields started to fail, so... We'll know a little bit more soon on that, we may not know before the meeting next Tuesday. I think it needs to be one of those priorities, because it never got done, and it should have, because everything beyond Huron Woods did get done, right? So we've got a half mile section of road that's gonna blow up, that you gotta drive through to get to the good section.
And how much is the county road to which you're gonna put in there?
It's a local road.
It's, it's the same designation as the road in front of your house. No, no, yes it is.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, how much are they gonna help realigning that, that intersection there?
The intersections...
They already paid what they're gonna pay for the improvement of that intersection, for the foreseeable future, because the grant they got was spent when they redid Wright Street last year, the year before, I think it was last year.
So they took the grant money and used it differently than what they... So they took the grant money and used it differently than what they requested?
No.
You know, they figured out how to get what they want.
This is the way the road commission has to work. They got a lot more money to redo Wright Street than they had to redo Forestville Road because there's no funding mechanism other than local tax revenue for local streets, period. Act $51 covers their winter maintenance and then it's gone.
Yeah, we got an interesting system going. But anyways, do they have money? Did they get ARPA money? Did the county road commission get money?
If the county, if the county gives them some, they requested a whole bunch.
And did they ask for anything to finish this mess?
I don't know, I wouldn't have that many, we talked a little.
So we might want to know that first.
I don't think so. They're, they're looking at projects. They formed like a subcommittee of eight townships supervisors with two of their board members.
Did we get on that committee? Well, then you'll be able to burn out news.
So far, all we know is they're looking for projects. We're supposed to, this is part of the, part of the discussion I have to have with you, and I've already talked to Pete, that, you know, the road committee wants to work on this and come up with projects for the next five years. That's what they're looking for. They don't want, they don't want somebody to call them in October and say, "Hey, next spring, can you pave two miles of this road?" Right, oh, they can't do that.
The only way they can is if you pay for it.
Right, but even then, even then, he said they, that they don't have the schedule. They've already got their schedule done a year in advance. He said sometimes two years.
Yeah.
Because they have to if they're buying supplies or figuring out staff.
So we could potentially ask for them to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Along with fixing Commerce Drive.
Right.
So you're saying...
All you can do is ask, right?
This needs to stay on the list.
I think so.
At least for...
We don't know, I don't have a recommendation for priority yet because we have a couple of unknowns we need more information on. So I would not advise taking it off the list. I think it needs to stay on there. I just can't advise you on how high the priority it should be. So here's the other thing. If it's not going to get done with ARPA funding, we need to commit to it with township road funding, which is going to be 100% general fund, right? Because the road millage doesn't even pay for the entire debt payment. So it would be, it would be a transfer in the budget process from the general fund to public improvements because that's how we've been funding all of our road maintenance since the original bond project.
Because we're paying almost $60,000, $70,000 out of general fund for the...
Has road funding gone?
Just for the debt.
Just for the debt. So we're not covering it with the...
On top of that is the general fund as well.
I can't find the language on it. It's in one of my boxes. Oh, we had the millage, what it was designed for, exactly. What roads and stuff like that.
Randy would have that.
I don't have that.
Well, I got it, but... We got the language, we got the, you just have, I can ask lost again.
All right, I appreciate it.
Hold and wait, wait and hold.
There's a section of road right there just past the intersection. That's just a water issue.
There's plenty of drainage issues right at that intersection, and that's why the road commission couldn't afford to do anything significant there. It'll be a big project, whatever it ends up being.
And it's got to be addressed.
Right, so it might make sense if, we need to talk to the road commission in a little more detail. We need to talk to this prospective developer in more detail to figure out, should we be focusing on spending $170,000 to $175,000 of township money, whether it's ARPA funds or general fund money, to do that section next year? Or, does the timing of all of the other balls in play make sense that we save the money to contribute towards a proper fix?
I think with this, you're putting $175,000 band-aid out of something that's not going to last. It's just not the water.
The other side of my argument is, if nothing's going to happen up on Forestville Road for five years, the band-aid will last that long. But the road that's there won't.
I think the band-aid may last that long with a little bit of drainage.
That's part of what, what's in that cost estimate, is shoulder and drainage problems. But it's not going to be the significant drainage improvements that are needed coming off of Wright Street. Because all that water, all from the top of the hill by Target comes whooping down there, and by the time it gets to that point, it is water.
I've seen it through right over the road. I mean, it just, like a river going over there with a big downpour.
They've just finished the project over there a year ago, and the first rain, they had to go over there and fix it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's...
They were flowing out.
It's a lot of water coming to a small point. So that's the fourth one. The fifth one is one that we could have funded with ARPA funds even without the final rule because the hydro excavator is being purchased specifically to address lead service line issues, which is the unfunded mandate in the new lead copper rule. So that's why I kept it on here, even though it's already in the approved CIP, and Lenny was proceeding with getting bids for that purchase. You should be aware that it would have been an eligible expense with or without the strings attached because it's a qualified lead service line expenditure. Because we're looking at purchasing the equipment to do the work ourselves.
So what did the governor say about money being out there to fund these things?
They're not giving us enough information right now.
So it's out there though. She talked about that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we just have to watch it.
Yeah, she talks a lot.
Yeah.
Well, she does, but you know, if you don't watch it, you miss it, and then you're, you're out of luck kind of thing. So I'm sure, I'm sure officials here are watching it, our staff. But I do know she talked about funding some money out of the Michigan ARPA funds to fund that.
Well, and there's supposed to be a whole bunch of money from the infrastructure bill as well. I don't have any information to make an educated decision on right now because it's not going to hold there. I know there's infrastructure money coming, and there's specifically money coming for lead service lines, but my guess is the money is going to be to replace the lines that we find. We got to find it first. So...
Well, who knows? I hope we don't find any.
We saw the expensive looking.
I know, well, I know.
We found two already.
We what?
We found two already.
Did you? Are they on Fair Avenue?
No.
Oh.
Neither of them were in an area we anticipated finding them because the water line was installed with a copper line when the system was built. It's the galvan, old galvanized line coming from the well into the house that puts it in the category because we don't know if it was ever connected to a lead fixture before we ever had any responsibility involved. But the law doesn't distinguish that. If we find galvanized line, we have to replace it.
It's for safety, it's for people's safety.
Problem is, it's on the private side that we never owned in the first place.
So what are we going to do with this list on Tuesday? How do you want to present it?
Well, I think you need to establish some priorities. I, I believe if the water and sewer funds are paying for the roof repairs and the hydro excavator...
Take those off, John.
We're going to be tight on, on funds for things that we really need to be looking at from a distribution and collection perspective moving forward, feasibility studies, that, that kind of thing. But I'm sure we can find a way to make it happen. Maybe we'll get some additional infrastructure money that we're not currently planning on. If you want to reduce it to the three in the middle, that's certainly something you could do.
Well, I think if you could pay for the hydro excavator out of the ARPA funds, that gives you free up a little bit of money for the roof.
Yeah.
And at least in the water fund.
Especially if we have to do some kind of a study, we don't know if that's going to be in there.
Because the water fund is the one, the water fund is the one that just kind of rebounded. We don't really want to drain it again, so...
No, we don't.
So I would say leave the hydro excavator on there, and if we can pay through it for ARPA funds, I would pay for it through ARPA.
You said you had enough dollars in the water and sewer for that excavator.
Well, just water.
That was before we were talking about the water and sewer funds paying for the roof too.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Can the ARPA funds pay for feasibility studies?
Probably, because it is infrastructure.
So maybe out of infrastructure too, if there'll be some money for that.
I'm not sure I want to add feasibility study to this list because we can't afford this list.
Oh, no, I don't think right now. I don't think you have to spend the money right now.
We don't. We need to establish what the priorities are so staff knows what to be looking at otherwise because we've got to find money potentially to do all of these things in the next couple of years.
Well, I'd leave the hydro excavator on there, and then we don't deplete the water fund again.
Takes more sense than ARPA, because it's direct. If we ever got, well, we will give an audit on it. It's a direct expense. There's no question about it.
Yeah.
And it's $100,000, you don't have to deplete the fund.
And you can pay for that out of funds we already have received.
Okay.
So if you wanted to, at the next meeting, you could pass a motion to allocate up to $100,000 of ARPA funds for a hydro excavator. And then we'll just leave those other four items, actually three, because the roof repairs will be done on the water and sewer. We're going to have to work on the agreement with Hall Contracting to do the design-build with UPEA for that project, but we'll get to that as soon as it's ready.
I just think we, we don't want to go down that slippery slope again where we deplete the water fund because we did that once, and it's, we're finally getting the water fund back to...
It's coming back.
Where it should be, so we shouldn't deplete that. I mean, hopefully this winter won't be horrible, but you know, it hasn't been bad, but we could have future winters that are bad again and cause infrastructure problems.
Yeah, and it's not over yet.
You've got a long ways to go on this one.
Well, I would hope it warms up, but...
You've got a good snow cover and everything, but we still have a long ways to go. I agree with Randy. If we just, if we do the hydro excavator and the water and sewer does the roof, and the other three, we'll just kind of have to wait and see. That's it.
How's that sound, John?
We should still keep the other three in the same priority, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will work with Lenny. We'll get an action form for you to consider at the next meeting to consider allocating up to $100,000 of our ARPA funds for a hydro excavator, and after I staff to bid it out.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And then we probably should put the other ones on the agenda to have a discussion. So I would, we'll know at some point, is it what we're looking at for the listed funds?
Well, that would be, yeah, that would be, it would, it would be the funding priorities, but hydro excavator would be out of there.
Right, yeah. Have two separate conversations.
Yeah. Two separate agenda items, yeah.
For the remaining three?
Yeah.
As far as the roof, you'll have something on, where we can move forward with that?
As soon as you get something from Haley.
I don't think we'll have that for the next meeting.
Do we, but do we as a board have to do anything to start the process?
No. Okay, you've given us enough guidance. We, we know what we need to do.
Okay.
We will work on negotiating an agreement with Hall and UPEA to get this done, designed, built, and hopefully get it constructed before next winter. They might be able to do it early in next winter, once, you know, the weather turns because most of the work is done inside, but I guess we got to talk to them to figure out how to fit into their schedule.
So that might be the second February meeting, or 15th or whatever it is, 14th, 15th?
Lenny and I just talked to Matt Trito at UPEA today because he sent us that updated budget number. And he said he would get with Hall to figure out how we potentially fit in their schedule this year, so... Some of that has to do with the availability of the steel beams.
It sounds like an agenda item too.
Yeah.
We can do that too in the next...
It's not going to be ready for the next meeting.
No, the second meeting in February maybe, or the third.
Can we just have a report that's, as the direction we're going? So the public, everything knows we have a problem, and we're addressing it, and we're moving forward.
That could be part of Lenny's report.
Yeah.
Unless you don't need direction.
When it comes to the second meeting.
Well, that's fine, as long as it gets out for the public.
Well, his report is going to be the same meeting that he's, we're hopefully going to have action to consider, so...
Yeah, true. Yeah, we'll count him in his report.
The second meeting's fine. They don't need to know until then.
And we still have, we still have to have time to put all this stuff together for the next meeting too. And we've got a night meeting tomorrow that we're working on, so...
And Thursday this week is the deadline, so it's tight window this week.
Do the best you can with the stuff you have at hand. You know, that's all you can do.
As long as everyone remembers that, that's all we can do.
What else are you doing?
I have to take a nap most of the morning.
Oh, and now, okay.
So...
I think we've got plenty to do right now, so...
The next agenda will have an item to consider, speaking of the road issues. Directing the road committee, or actually should go to planning.
Yeah, they should direct the road committee.
Either way, because we can do either.
I think it's better to go through plan.
And to talk about five-year projects, we should go with the road commission.
I think it's better to go through planning and then we're not circumventing them.
They can direct them, they don't have to work on them. It could tie in with the road facilities plan too. All right, so I already had it on here. I'll, I'll change it to the planning commission.
Yeah.
And they're not meeting until Saturday?
And that's fine, because...
If COVID moves, I'll tell them our county. What else? You're good? You're good with what you're doing?
I got enough for one, one meeting.
All right. Still have no public. I didn't check emails here, but thanks, Dan.
We haven't heard from Eric at all.
Absurd.
We don't, we have one motion.
Two motion, we had two motions. One is to approve the agenda as presented. That was approved. And then the second motion was to approve the strategic plan as amended, and that was approved.
Comments from the board?
Thought it was a good meeting.
I love work sessions.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, not work session, special meeting.
Well, special meeting.
But in a work session format.
And I like them. We can accomplish a lot more in work sessions. I, I, definitely, or special meetings, I, I like them.
And we're looking at each other.
I moved to adjourn then.
Good idea.
3:49.
Hi.